Morning, want to get started? Thank you. Alright, we'll get started, members will take their seat, visitors retire behind the rail. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Clarence Hester, a very good friend of mine. Pastor Hester used to drive me around when my first election, had some very, very spiritual conversations, and I want to thank you so much Pastor for making sure that you kept me in check during that particular time. Pastors here today from Erie Avenue Baptist Church. Would all members of guests and visitors please rise? Now you gotta go here, this one is mine up here.
Giving honor to God, to you Mr. President, and to the members of this council, we thank God and President Clark for this august honor and privilege to stand before this prestigious body of servants and lift you up to an Almighty God. Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, we come pausing in this moment to reverence your name and lift you up in the spirit of prayer that these deliberations may be consumed by your love. We pray that your countenance may shine upon this council and bless them with guidance. We implore you to look down on this city and this council with mercy and that their understanding may be enlightened by your wisdom. We pray that you sanctify their thoughts, their attentions, even their words and their actions, that all that they speak and do will bound to the honor and glory of you and the well-being of our great city. Look down on our mayor, managing director in this council and help them to work together to face the serious facts of our times and to find the courage to meet them justly with wisdom, discipline, and resourcefulness. Grant to all of us an unwavering faith in the absolute necessity of an inward life and the efficacy of the dedicated intelligence and the power of an active, even sanctified goodwill. Even now, Lord, help them to seek guidance in all their worthy pursuits and ever widen opportunities for continuing services to you and the people of Philadelphia. Grant unto this council the victory of faith on the ideals to which we are committed to as a city. Grant our city peace, resources, and provisions as you provide this body with strength and spiritual substance for performing with great might the task with which our common lives yet confront us with. Meet the deeper concerns of faith, service, courage, and sacrifice. Be a power within us to do the things we ought to and extend the boundaries of a full and enlightened life for all. Even now, Lord, use this body as instrument of your glory to enhance the services and the quality of life for all the residents of this great city. This we pray, as you bless this assembly in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor so much for those inspiring words. Council, obdies. Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you Mr. President, I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 3rd, 2018 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 3rd, 2018 stand approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you Mr. President, on behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, on behalf of the minority, there's no request for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would dispense with the regular order of business and I would like to welcome, and I want to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here, we hope your stay here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. And again, thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Don, who presented resolution acknowledging and recognizing Amplify Philly. Would Mr. Dave Silver and those accompanying him please join Councilman Don at the podium. And joining Councilman Don, we have Councilman Jones, Councilman Green, Councilman O, Councilman Taubmanberger, Councilman Heenan, and Councilwoman Fonda Reynolds Brown, and Councilwoman Gimm.
Today we're recognizing Amplify Philly, but more importantly, we're recognizing the tech community of Philadelphia, which is our future. Everyone knows that the economic job multiplier of tech is five to one, meaning for every job in tech, we create five more jobs. Behind me today are the future of our city, the people who create jobs in our city, we need to support them, they're doing a great job, and they're making us proud of Philadelphia. And so in that light, we recently had an unbelievable event in Austin, Texas at South by Southwest, and they have their own house there, and that's a lot of what this resolution's about, but also to recognize the great work of the people in technology. Many of them are way younger than me, okay? But that's a good thing, so, and by the way, just for those of you who haven't heard me say this, one out of three jobs in tech do not require a college degree. The average income of tech is $39,000 higher, and we need to start teaching coding and technology pre-K to 12th grade in our public schools and charter schools. So having said that, acknowledging and recognizing Amplify Philly, a partnership of public and private organizations that join together to highlight Philadelphia's startup and tech community and promote Philadelphia as a hub for startups at the 2018 South by Southwest Conference and Festival in Austin, Texas.
Whereas South by Southwest is a conference and festival that offers the unique convergence of independent films, original music, and emerging technologies while fostering creative and personal growth, and?
Whereas South by Southwest is the launchpad for new creative content, media presentations, music showcases, and films and screenings, and also provides conference panel discussions which present a forum for learning business activities and global networking opportunities, and?
Whereas, South by Southwest also provides intellectual and creative intermingling among industry leaders which helps spark new ideas and carves the path for a future of ever-evolving field even after the festival is over, and?
Whereas Amplify Philly's initiative is the result of a grassroots, community-driven effort which organizes exhibitors and attendees for a larger Philadelphia impact at what is considered one of the most influential technology conferences in the world, and?
Whereas, Amplify Philly, organized by R E C Philly, Witty Gritty, and Philly, startup leaders transformed a two-story bar in Austin, Texas into the Amplify Philly House with two days of Philly-centric programming, and?
Whereas, attending South by Southwest in a coordinated effort reflects the growing tech scene in Philadelphia and showcases our city's dynamic environment for entrepreneurialism, innovation, and collaboration, and?
Whereas, we in this council are very proud of this collaboration of innovators who formed to bring greater Philadelphia story to South by Southwest, which speaks to what a unique, vibrant, living, and breathing technology community we have. Now therefore be it.
Resolve that this council of the City of Philadelphia hereby acknowledges and recognizes Amplify Philly, a partnership of public and private organizations that join together to highlight Philadelphia's startup and tech community and promote Philadelphia as a hub for startups at the 2018 South by Southwest Conference and Festival in Austin, Texas.
That's it, no, I'm sorry. Alright, let's get it, let's get it.
Just want to thank council.
Chair recognizes Mr. Silver for remarks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just want to thank the council for having us today, Alan Don for putting us together, really appreciate that. I just want to reiterate just what's something very special that happens when you bring in the city, startup PHL, and corporations, just Comcast and Lift Labs, but then you bring together entrepreneurs and diverse startup community, and then our music community and our artists, and watch what happens when we bring all those people together to say, to really have one mission, which is to talk about Philadelphia and the beautiful, growing communities that are here, and this is what it's all about right here. And so I just want to thank everyone that's on the stage and the city's support, and we're going to continue doing this and continue growing this Amplify Philly initiative to continue talking about Philadelphia's growing art and tech communities across the country and across the globe. So thank you for everyone here, and thank you for having us today.
Council, obdies. Thank you. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who presented a resolution celebrating the 70th anniversary of the State of Israel. With Ms. Robin Schatz and those accompanying her, please join Councilman Johnson at the podium. And joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilwoman Bass, Councilman O, Councilman Jones, Councilman Taubmanberger, and Councilman Don, Councilman Squilla, and Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Today we have the privilege of honoring the 70th anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel, who I've had the opportunity to visit several summers ago, and it was an eye-opening and life-changing experience. Being a Christian, I had an opportunity to visit a variety of sites and several sites that I learned about as a young man going to Sunday School, and as a man of faith, it just encouraged me to, as my grandmother would say, keep on keeping on. And so it's an honor to have of us today Naomi Adler, who is the CEO of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, and Mr. Amir Saqib, who's the Deputy Counsel General of Israel in New York, and hopefully in the near future, will advocate and bring back a consulate here to the City of Philadelphia.
That's right.
And so I want to thank all my colleagues for being up on the stage with me today, and I also want to make mention of Councilman Alan Don, who's working with my staff, and as relates to the 70th anniversary and a variety of different activities that are going to be taking place throughout the City of Philadelphia throughout the rest of this year. And so the resolution reads, "Celebrating the 70th anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel."
Whereas on the 14th of May, 1948, in Tel Aviv, David Ben-Gurion declared the establishment of the Jewish state in Palestine to be called Israel. Ben-Gurion would serve as the nation's first and longest-serving prime minister, and?
Whereas Israel's scientific, economic, and cultural achievements are testament to the dynamism of the young nation in only 70 years, the Israeli economy has become a leader in technology, medicine, and agriculture, and this nation has developed a lasting friendship with the United States based upon shared values and mutual admiration, and?
Whereas Philadelphia has been home to a thriving Jewish community since the late 17th century, the community is represented in all its diversity by an array of organizations, including the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, the American Jewish Committee of Philadelphia, Southern New Jersey, the Anti-Defamation League of Philadelphia, and the Israeli-American Council of Philadelphia. And whereas Philadelphia also has the distinction of being home to the National Museum of Jewish American History, which sits on Philadelphia's Historic Independence Mall. The museum was founded in 1976 by members of Congregation Mikkva Israel, which was founded in 1740 and is the oldest continuous formal Jewish congregation in the United States, and?
Whereas, since 1966, Tel Aviv and Philadelphia have been sister cities. They have since built long-lasting ties through cultural, political, and educational exchanges. The cities have come to share international status as hubs for tourism, culture, and innovation, and?
Whereas, Mayor Michael Neller traveled with the Philadelphia delegation to Tel Aviv in 2013 in partnership with the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia to foster positive relationships with leadership in Israel and encourage Israeli investment in Philadelphia. On that trip, Philadelphia's representatives met with Israelis' president, Shimon Perez, and? Whereas, Israel's anniversary celebration began with a torch-lighting ceremony on the evening of Wednesday, April 18th, and culminated with a public Shabbat service altogether comprising of 70 total hours of celebration and festivities. These included an all-night beach party along a 70-kilometer stretch of coastline, as well as festivals in homage to spontaneous horror dances that filled the streets after Ben-Gurion declared the establishment of the state, and?
If New York and Miami had a baby, it would be Tel Aviv. Whereas, whereas those celebrations will also include the world-renowned Philadelphia Orchestra, which will travel to Israel in June and play concerts in Haifa, Tel Aviv, and Jerusalem, the only major American orchestra to participate in the anniversary celebrations. The orchestra will be accompanied by acclaimed, Israel-born and Philadelphia-based chef Michael Salmonova? Salmonova?
Salmonova.
Salva, Salmonova, okay. Hey, that's what I'm trying to tell you, and?
Whereas, over 200,000 people who identify as Jewish live in the greater Philadelphia region and the community, and they will celebrate the Jewish state's 70th anniversary with cultural and philanthropic events throughout 2018, and?
Whereas, the City of Philadelphia will formally celebrate Israel anniversary with a series of events including a ceremony flag-raising on May 14th of 2018 outside of City Hall. Council General Downey Dayan, Mayor Jim Kenny, members of council, and other city officials will join Naomi Adler, President and CEO of the Jewish Federation of the Greater Philadelphia, and Philadelphia's Jewish community in celebration of Israel's foundation in 1948. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that this body hereby acknowledges and celebrates the 70th anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel, and we say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Adler for remarks.
Thank you, it is such an honor to be with you today to celebrate this special relationship between Philadelphia and Israel. I'd personally like to thank resolution sponsors, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, Councilman Alan Don, Councilwoman Sherelle Parker, Councilman Brian O'Neill, Councilman David O., and of course, all members of City Council for adding their signatures. I am so proud to have the opportunity to formally recognize the strong bonds Philadelphia shares with Israel. Business-to-business partnerships are flourishing, and we continue to work together to share best practices on security, technology, and of course, infrastructure. How wonderful it is to have a high-tech day and have the discussion about Israel today. Philadelphia's sister-city relationship with Tel Aviv unites two cities that are both emerging as global hubs of leadership and innovation and education, and both cities share an allegiance to the principles of brotherly and sisterly love, a heartfelt commitment to celebrating diversity, to upholding LGBTQ and gender equality, and protecting and empowering our community's most vulnerable neighbors. This resolution means so much to us at the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia. At the Jewish Federation, we serve vulnerable populations here in Philadelphia and across the world. We inspire community engagement and to support Jewish life and learning. We are so grateful that the City of Philadelphia has always shown tremendous support for our priorities as well as our local Jewish communities. That's why it's so wonderful to be here today, to join together in celebration of Philadelphia's Jewish population and those who are with them, and share in our mutual love and dedication to the Jewish homeland of Israel. If you're looking for more ways to celebrate Israel, we have plenty of local opportunities coming up. Next Monday, please all join us on May 14th as we once again come together at City Hall with Mayor Kenny for the City of Philadelphia's first-ever raising of the Israeli flag over Philadelphia. This is a historic moment. I hope all of you will join us for this special ceremony, which will start at 1:00 PM. Also, we are joining with the Citizens Diplomacy International to celebrate our sister-city relationship with Tel Aviv at Where Else Sister Cities Park. From June 5th to June 28th, the park will feature Humans of Tel Aviv, a public art exhibition that celebrates Tel Aviv's diversity and vitality. Thank you again for joining Philadelphia's Jewish communities to celebrate this momentous moment of Israel's 70th anniversary. We hope you will help us keep the celebration going at many of the events to come. Thank you.
Good morning, all. Honorable President Clark, member of Council Johnson, and all members of council that co-sponsored this amazing resolution, I'm extremely honored and privileged to be here and bring greetings from the eternal capital of the Jewish people, Jerusalem, our capital, and also from Tel Aviv, a very nice city as well. And it really gives me a great honor to be here and represent the State of Israel on this very, very festivity, on this festivity day, and to thank, thank all of you for bringing this today and hosting us today here at this chambers. I just want to share a small story with you. In the heart of Jerusalem, in the heart of our capital, there's a very interesting park called the Liberty Bell Park, and I grew up in that city knowing that there is a Liberty Park in the center of Jerusalem, and I never dreamt that those days when I was playing at that park that I would be standing here in the actual place where the Liberty Bell is and bring greetings from the people of Israel, so thank you all. Israel is extremely proud to be 70 years old. We've done a lot, we've achieved a lot, but this has not been possible without the amazing help of the Jewish community of the United States, the people of the United States, and the people of Philadelphia as well. So thank you all for everything you've done and you will do for us, and we are there to, as we heard in the resolution, we have, we're protecting the same values, we're sharing the same ideologies and ideas, and we'll continue this amazing relationship for another 70 years. So thank you all, and have a great day.
Thank you. Council, obdies.
Councilor Bides.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Stephen S. Tang. With Dr. Tang and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Green, Councilman O., Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Tauberger, and Councilwoman Parker, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to all those who co-sponsored it, who are here with me...
Hold on a second. Can we have, can we have a little quiet, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank all those who co-sponsored it, and of course, all members signed it. A special thanks to Councilman O., who agreed to yield to me on this because he wanted to stand where I am standing. Thank you, Councilman. Reso... Excuse me. Resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Stephen S. Tang for his work at the University City Science Center and his leadership in technology and innovation in the City of Philadelphia. Let me say we're extremely grateful for all that he has done. We were only sorry to hear that he had moved on.
Whereas, Dr. Stephen S. Tang became President and CEO of the University City Science Center, the nation's oldest and largest urban research park in two thousand eight. After ten years as University City Science Center President and CEO, Dr. Stephen S. Tang will move on to become the leader of the Bethlehem, Pennsylvania-based medical device company, Orishore Technologies, as President and CEO. Anne?
Whereas, a major component of Dr. Tang's legacy at the Science Center is the physical expansion of the Science Center campus. Under his leadership, the Science Center partnered with Westford Science and Technology and grew from a seventeen-acre to twenty-seven acres, rebranding the campus area in U-City Square. Anne?
Whereas, Tang's leadership positions the Science Center as a leading tech-based economic development organization in the Greater Philadelphia region. Tang transformed the Science Center from a traditional real estate-focused research park to an innovation hub connecting innovators from across the Greater Philadelphia region. He oversaw the creation of the Quorum, which is almost seven years, has welcomed over seventy thousand entrepreneurs, scientists, investors, and others to over one thousand programs and events, and the Science Center has consistently opened up its doors to the community. I have partnered and participated in various college workshops, fairs with Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Browns on Saturday mornings, and so we thank the Science Center for opening up its doors for the surrounding community. Anne?
Whereas, Dr. Tang's work at the Science Center has advanced Philadelphia as an incubator of innovative ideas and companies. The QED, Proof of Concept Funding Program for University Technologies with Market Potential, began in two thousand and nine. It has helped ten technologies obtain licenses, eight startups form, and thirteen projects leverage twenty-two million dollars in additional funding. Anne?
Whereas, in addition to his good work at the Science Center, Dr. Tang also serves on several statewide regional and local boards of directors. Along with Pennsylvania Governor Tom Wolf, he co-chairs the Team Pennsylvania Foundation, which bridges the gap between government and the private sector. Anne?
Whereas, in September of two thousand sixteen, Dr. Tang was appointed to the National Advisory Council on Innovation and Entrepreneurship, NACIE, and now serves as its co-chair through two thousand and eighteen. NACIE members offer recommendations to the United States Secretary of Commerce for policies and programs designed to make U.S. communities, businesses, and the workforce more globally competitive. Previously, Dr. Tang served on the United States Department of Commerce's Innovation Advisory Board. Anne?
Whereas, Dr. Tang has been a strong voice in support of immigrant entrepreneurs. When programs like the country's H-1B visa came under threat, Tang stood by his conviction that the region should do more to protect immigrants. And whereas Dr. Tang has used his time at the Science Center to make a significant contribution to our community, he has perhaps been the most transformational leader in the Science Center's history and leaves it extremely well-positioned for decades of successful growth. We thank him for his service and wish him luck in his future endeavors.
Yeah, and I'd like to say with the permission of the Councilwoman Blackwell that it's been my pleasure to have the opportunity to work with Dr. Tang. Definitely one of the most innovative and capable leaders here in Philadelphia. He has been so impactful in so many ways. Sorry to see him leave our city, but I'm sure he will continue to interact with us. He is very strongly tied in. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Dr. Stephen S. Tang for his work at the University City Science Center and his leadership in technology and innovation in the City of Philadelphia. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Tang as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition.
Chair recognizes Dr. Tang for remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you, Councilman O. Thank you, Councilwoman Parker, and thank you for all here present, City Council President Clark, and all the members of City Council. It's really, truly an honor to be here to receive this proclamation, and I'm deeply, deeply humbled. I have only one regret about being here today, and that is because the first time I was scheduled to be here, it was postponed because of the Eagles championship parade. And the second time I was scheduled to be here was canceled because of Villanova's championship parade. So, I think I'm safe in saying I'm the only person in history to ever have a resolution canceled twice by a championship parade. And with all due respect to Council President and your capable scheduling staff, I have to wonder if you had scheduled this for mid to late June, would the result of the Seventy-Sixers game be different last night? I guess we'll never know. We'll never know. So, as many of you know, and it's just been expressed, I'm the son of immigrants who, like so many before and after them, came to this country in search of a better life. And I must admit that, like children of immigrants and children of many first-generation families, I was raised to seek opportunities to belong, to stand out, stand out and lift up others in our community. I owe that to the support and encouragement, and to be perfectly honest, the prodding of my parents. So, I'm so happy that my mother, eighty-two-years-young Helen Tang Yates is here today. Immigrant from China, and my darling, darling wife, Jill Chernikoff, the granddaughter of Russian immigrants, native of Philadelphia, pioneer of Philadelphia television, who once covered the events here at City Council, and now an excellent executive coach to many senior executives in Philadelphia, including the great pro bono work she does every night for me to make me a better person. I also want to thank my colleagues from the Science Center, Matt Goldfine and Najee Bush, for being here today as well. The poet John Donne famously said, "No man is an island," and it's true. It would be impossible for one person alone to achieve all that you outline in this proclamation. I have to give credit to the talented team at the Science Center. Thank you for shining a bright light on their hard work and their achievements. It's been a singular honor to lead this effective organization that's helping Philadelphia invent the future. This proclamation truly belongs to the Science Center team. Now, one of the fringe benefits of the job has been the opportunity to work with and get to know Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman O., Councilwoman Parker, and so many members of council as well. Since we're now going to celebrate our Rookie of the Year, Ben Simmons from the Sixers, I have to say a special shout-out to the rookie class of two thousand fifteen, that included Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, and Councilwoman Gimm. So, your dedication to Philadelphia and support of the Science Center is one of the key ingredients for our recipe for success. I'm now more confident than ever that Philadelphia is poised to achieve great things and get the recognition it deserves as a global innovation hub. Organizations like the Science Center will play an important impactful role in the city's future success. Leaving the Science Center has been bittersweet. I leave a capable staff and board of directors in place that has defined, has defined a clear path forward, and while I'll no longer be working in the city anymore, I will be watching with keen interest, and Jill and I will remain nearby in our home and experience all of it. In closing, recently a reporter asked me the advice I'd have for the next CEO of the Science Center, and I'd like to share that response with you. I think it pertains not only to the next CEO of the Science Center, but all leaders of Philadelphia. And because I was past Chairman of the Committee of Seventy, the city's long-serving advocate for better government, and one that I like to say elected officials in Philadelphia love to hate and hate to love. And in fact, I was honored to be the first person of color to chair the Committee of Seventy's Board of Directors, and it's a hundred-and-eleven-year history before I was elected as chairman. And I was also happy to turn the chair mantle over to Brett Perkins, who became the first African-American chairman of that very esteemed organization. So, here's my advice to you and the next CEO of the Science Center. You will accomplish much if you believe our Greater Philadelphia community will be better and stronger with innovation and entrepreneurship as one of our core missions. It can also affect the lives of those impoverished in our neighborhoods if we include them in our mission and embrace them. I encourage you to put the community's interests first, link those interests to the interests of the Science Center's shareholders and stakeholders, and then leverage the capabilities of our talented team at the Science Center. If you do all that, what you will discover and understand is why we are truly the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. So, council members, I encourage you to advocate for the community's interests, link those interests to those of the Science Center's shareholders and stakeholders, and leverage those capabilities of our talented team at the Science Center. Thank you so much for this very, very high honor. It's been a pleasure serving you.
Thank you. Councilor Bides.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Our next order of business is communications and a chair request at the Sardar Farms delivers messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May nine, two thousand eighteen, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at a session on April twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, Bill Number One Eight Zero Two Six Four. And I am pleased to advise you that on May nine, two thousand eighteen, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at a session on May three, two thousand eighteen, Bill Number One Eight Zero Zero One Zero. And I'm hereby returning without my signature the following bill which is passed by council at a session on April twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, Bill Number One Seven Zero Nine Five Six. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution confirming the appointment of Barbara Moore as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January one, two thousand nineteen, and a resolution confirming the reappointment of Christopher Lewis as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January one, two thousand twenty-three. And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner and the free library of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement to lease from the Philadelphia Municipal Authority personal computers and associated equipment and receive related maintenance and other services for the use of the free library of Philadelphia. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number Two Twenty-Two by striking from the City Plan and vacating the legally open portion of Bristol Street from Adams Avenue to the Frankfurt Creek Channel, striking from the City Plan and vacating Leeper Street from Adams Avenue to the Frankfurt Creek Channel, striking from the City Plan, Deal Street from Leeper Street to a point northeastwardly therefrom, and reserving and placing on the City Plan a right-of-way. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation to receive an easement from the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use of a portion of Thirty Twenty-Five Meeting House Road, and to grant to the owners of property on the Three Thousand Block of Meeting House Road an easement for stormwater drainage purposes across a portion of Pocessin Creek Park. And an ordinance approving the fiscal year two thousand nineteen capital budget providing for the expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith. And an ordinance submitting Title Four of the Philadelphia Code by many Subcode F, the Philadelphia Fire Code, and Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add sections requiring hard... to add sections requiring hardwired interconnected smoke alarms in boarding homes. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of parcels of land, together with the improvements thereon located in and about the area bounded by West Huntington Street, North Thirty-first Street, West York Street, and North Napa Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements thereon located in and about the area bounded by the Schuylkill River Trail, Hackeys Mill Road, and Port Royal Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into an amendment to sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the use by the city of premises located at eleven-oh-one Market Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with WHY Partners Limited Partnership for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at fourteen-twenty-five Arch Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Water Commissioner, the Revenue Commissioner, and the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority pursuant to which the city will assume certain obligations under a contract the authority will enter into with Census USA Incorporated to provide, install, maintain, and operate facilities and equipment for the automated collection and delivery of water usage data to the Revenue Department or other designated city department, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
All right. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to leave chambers on council business in my absence if I'm not back in time for bills and resolutions. I want to be recorded voting aye on all bills and resolutions with the exception of Resolution Number One Eight Zero Four Zero Nine, which may be held by the sponsor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall be granted. The record shall reflect. Mr. Decker? Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to ask somebody to give somebody a Halls or something. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to echo the sentiments that were just expressed by Councilman Heenan. I do have to leave the chambers, but would also like the record to reflect that I am responding accordingly.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. The record shall be granted, and the record shall reflect your vote. Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning. No bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have two bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania and to approve the proposed addition to thirty-nine-hundred Walnut Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Section Two of an ordinance, Bill Number One Six Zero One Four Five, approved April nineteen, two thousand sixteen, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number Forty-four by placing on the City Plan Thirty-seventh Street from Market Street to Philbert Street and from Philbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eight Street, north of Philbert Street, and Warren Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eight Street.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution hereby recognizing May eighteenth, two thousand eighteen as Haitian Flag Day in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two bills and one resolution, and on Councilman Heenan's behalf, I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner and the Free Library of Philadelphia on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement to lease from the Philadelphia Municipal Authority personal computers and associated equipment and receive related maintenance and other services.
For the committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Grant Avenue, Academy Road, Comet Avenue, Willets Road, and Ashton Road.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with WHY Partners Limited Partnership for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at one-four-two-five Arch Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of parcels of land, together with the improvements thereon, located in and about the area bounded by West Huntington Street, North Thirty-first Street, West York Street, and North Napa Street.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds can make additional free simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the Thirty-second Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill, co-sponsored by Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Brown, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Tollenberger, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Gim, Councilman Heenan, and Councilman Parker, which represents a supermajority.
Thank you, Councilman. Trying to send a signal, huh?
And an ordinance amending Chapter Nine, six-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to add a new section, Nine, six-thirty-seven, entitled Sale of Flavored Tobacco Products, prohibiting offering for sale and selling certain tobacco products other than cigarettes with characterizing flavors and fixing penalties.
And that will be referred to committee. The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have four non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-twenty-two Kimball Street located in the Second Councilmatic District. And a non-privileged resolution also naming South Thirteenth Street between Fitzwater and Catharist Streets Louis Hannibal Way. And a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Barbara Moore as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January one, two thousand nineteen.
That will actually go to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the reappointment of Christopher Lewis as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January one, two thousand twenty-three.
And that will be referred to committee. The two previous resolutions will be on next week's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing requests to the Law Department to represent City Council on appeals from decisions of the Philadelphia Zoning Board of Adjustment, and if the Law Department declines to render such services to City Council, authorizing the retention of outside counsel to provide such services.
And that will be on next week's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill for today.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance approving the fiscal year two thousand nineteen capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four.
And that will be referred to committee. The chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Tollenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil. Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city to receive an easement from the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use of a portion of thirty-twenty-five Meeting House Road, and to grant to the owners of property on the three-thousand block of Meeting House Road an easement for stormwater drainage purposes across a portion of Prokessing Creek Park.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the centennial celebration of the nation's first regularly scheduled air mail delivery.
And that will be on this week's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, for four bills, three resolutions, one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing six-eighteen Market Limited Partnership to construct and maintain facade enhancement encroachments at six-eighteen Market Street, and an ordinance authorizing Wanda Inn Incorporated to install and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at twenty-five-hundred South Third Street, and an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into an amendment to sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the use by the city of premises located at eleven-oh-one Market Street, and an ordinance amending Section Fourteen, six-oh-four of the Philadelphia Code entitled Accessory Uses and Structures by making technical changes to the size and sighting of roof deck access structures.
Those four bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Roman Catholic High School basketball team, the Catalites, on winning the two thousand eighteen Philadelphia Catholic League championship, the P.I.A.
Another one, huh?
State championship, and the Philadelphia Catholic League title.
You know, it's really hard to announce all these state champions every year, but the First District is known as the District of Champions, so it goes with the territory.
I don't know, Councilman, you've got a certain kind of recruitment thing going on down there, it's amazing. That's on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming South Thirteenth Street between Walnut and Locust Street as Edie Windsor Way.
And next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling for a Philadelphia historic marker on the campus of Temple University on the northeast corner of Thirteenth Street and Cecil Bemore Avenue to commemorate Edith Edie Windsor with a dedication on September twelve, two thousand eighteen, the first anniversary of her passing.
And that's on next week's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode F, the Philadelphia Fire Code, and Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add sections requiring hardwired interconnected smoke alarms in boarding homes.
For the committee.
And an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter Ten, seven-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refuge and Littering by providing for additional penalties and consequences for short dumping.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of forty-five, forty-six North Marvine Street located in the Eighth Councilmatic District in accordance with terms of Chapter Sixteen, seven-hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
And that will be on next week's calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
I did want to acknowledge that the first bill was introduced on your behalf.
Co-sponsored.
Co-sponsored. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer three privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Heenan, Green, Tollenberger, Parker, Dom, Jones, Reynolds Browns, and Squilla. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the United States Army for providing for the safety and security of the nation since its creation in the City of Philadelphia two-hundred-and-forty-three years ago.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May nineteen, two thousand eighteen as Armed Forces Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring WMMR on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary.
Also this week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number One Seven One One Two Five, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section Ten, six-oh-two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Smoking, by adding smoking restrictions at certain bus stops, and Bill Number One Eight Zero 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 One, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title Six of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code, by adding a new chapter, six-three-ten, entitled Sodium Safety Warning Labeling for Chain Restaurants. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of Council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers One Seven One, One Two Five, and One Eight Zero 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 One.
Thank you. It is moved and properly seconded that the rules of Council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number One Seven One, One Two Five, One Eight Oh Oh One. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had its first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of Council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, numbers One Eight Zero Four Three Three, One Eight Zero Four Three Six, One Eight Zero Four Three Seven, One Eight Zero Four Three Eight, One Eight Zero Four Three Nine, One Eight Zero Four Four Six, One Seven One Zero Eight Four, One Eight Zero Zero One One, One Eight Zero One Zero Four, One Eight Zero One Zero Five, One Eight Zero One Zero Six, One Eight Zero One Seven Seven, One Eight Zero Two Three Seven, and One Eight Zero Two Three Nine. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, call the first name.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on One Eight Zero One Zero Six, One Eight Zero Two Three Seven, One Eight Zero Four Three Three, One Eight Zero One Zero Five, One Eight Zero One Seven Seven, One Eight Zero Four Three Seven, One Eight Zero Two Three Nine, One Eight Zero Four Three Eight, One Eight Zero Two Three Seven, One Eight Zero Four Three Nine, and One Seven One Zero Eight Four.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people, and remand damage quo warranto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, Council Mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Last week, in talking to my public servants, I heard what seems to be the Philadelphia government motto, "That's above my pay grade." And a city would do it or die trying patriots and heroes like Franklin, Jefferson, Washington, and others. They never uttered, "That's above my pay grade." In February Art Museum speech, Jason Kelsey never said, "Super Bowl, that's above my pay grade." Since Philadelphia government is number one at being full of number two and steals homes from the most vulnerable sovereign people, prosecution of oath violators is clearly required, not the numerous resolutions. not the numerous resolutions against hidden federal government officials that council, mayor, and others regularly produce. Patriots sacrificed so much for the rule of law. To allow officials to violate oath constitution laws is unconscionable. As well-paid representatives, nothing is above your pay grade. Clearly defunding agencies and prosecuting oath constitution law violating officials is required. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article I, Sections 1 through 11, 26, PA, CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath constitution or law. I remind council, it takes law cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Trina Smith? Treene Smith? Good afternoon.
Well, it could be a better afternoon. I agree with this gentleman that just got off the mic. We're gonna have to be removing some of y'all from y'all's seats because we tired of hearing the same thing over and over again. And as I stand here, as a member of Philadelphia Tennis Union, I address Councilman Jones regarding the amendment of this bill, 170854. And I recognize, as I stand here, as a representative of the people and with the people, that essentially amendment of this bill will nullify the intended purpose for which it was created. This is what I understand upon talking with my comrades. And I would also like to clarify exactly what bill it was that you submitted to them, Councilman Jones? That you have so many co-sponsors? Is that it? Okay, what's the number of that bill specifically?
It doesn't have a name.
Oh, it doesn't have a number yet, okay. So the same thing with Councilman Bass, the one that you spoke of that Councilman Clark, President Clark is sponsoring, that has no number either? Okay. All right. Well, that pretty much concludes what I have to say today. And again, we will be removing y'all from y'all. We're gonna try hard to remove y'all from y'all seats that ain't doing y'all work. And we really do mean that because the government is for the people, by the people. We tired of y'all. It's public servants. You got voted in, and you're not doing your job. And I have had a very, my experience has not been good with any of y'all, with the majority of y'all for anything that I presented to y'all. And I'm asking y'all to be here for the people, by the people, or else y'all will be removed. That includes you, President Clark, and everybody under you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session. We will now move towards our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of 180433.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2201 North 27th Street, 2603 through 51 West Esquahanna Avenue, 2219 through 21 North 27th Street, 2223 North 27th Street, 2225 North 27th Street, 2227 North 27th Street, and 2610 through 16 West Fletcher Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180433 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180436.
A resolution also naming South Street between 23rd and 24th Street, Lois Fernandez Way, to honor the life and lasting legacy of Lois Fernandez, founder of the Odundee Festival.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180436 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180437.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District which will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 180437 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180438.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2860 North Leefgow Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180438 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180439.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2776 through 2778 Emerald Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180439 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180446.
A resolution encouraging the United States Army to locate the Army Futures Command in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180446 is adopted. Mr. Decker, read 171084.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or less a real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by North Broad Street, Noble Street, 13th Street, and the building known as 401 North Broad Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180011.
An ordinance amending Chapter 16200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sales, Leases, and Other Grants of City-Owned Buildings and Facilities by requiring appraisals as a condition of approval of certain acquisitions and dispositions of real estate.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180104.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 130 West West Moreland Street with any improvements thereon for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180105.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 3300 North Front Street with any improvements thereon for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180106.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Springdale Associates Limited Partnership for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 520 North Delaware Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180177.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Roxborough Development Corporation for use by the corporation of all or a portion of the premises located at 463 through 65 Leverton Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180237.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or less interest such as an easement by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Tacony Trail, and authorizing an agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the PRA to act as the city's condemnation agent.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180239.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or less a real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Norwich Drive, 67th Street, Essington Avenue, and 70th Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan is voting aye, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution hereby recognizing May 18, 2018, as Haitian Flag Day in Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President, I move the adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the centennial celebration of the nation's first regularly scheduled air mail delivery introduced by Councilman O'Neil.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil. It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Roman Catholic High School basketball team, the Cahalites, on winning the 2018 Philadelphia Catholic League Championship, the PIAA State Championship, and the Philadelphia Catholic League title introduced by Councilman Squilla.
One more time, Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the United States Army for providing for the safety and security of the nation since its creation in the city of Philadelphia 243 years ago introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May 19, 2018, as Armed Forces Day in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
For adoption of the resolution.
Moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring WMMR on the occasion of its 50th anniversary introduced by Councilman O.
One more time, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. And any speeches on the part of a minority, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Last week, I believe, I did speak about the gentleman Eric Riddick, who the Superior Court in its decision just at the end of last year said likely sits an innocent man in prison but for the Post Conviction Relief Act. And I went to see Senator Stuart Greenleaf, who chairs the Senate Judiciary Committee, and before I went, I discovered, and I did not know this, that he has introduced some 20 bills on criminal justice reform, including the Post Conviction Relief Act. He has done bills which includes why we can have DNA evidence in our court system to appeal convictions. He has done a lot of work, and I really want to recognize the work he's done, that he is still doing. Unfortunately, he is not running for reelection, and that means that we have to support him in his efforts for a more just criminal justice system here in Pennsylvania. I did also go to visit Eric Riddick at State Correctional Institution Chester. Had an opportunity to sit down with him for about an hour. I have been familiarized myself with evidence and his appeal and other things. And it is very unfortunate that the evidence that proves that he is not guilty is not able to be considered. I'm really bringing this up because I will distribute some information to my colleagues, and I will introduce a resolution urging the governor to pardon him. I think the evidence is very clear that if he were able to have his evidence considered, he would not be incarcerated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. A friendly reminder to my colleagues about a briefing immediately following council in the caucus room with the cultural works of Greater Philadelphia. We should know that this is a Management Commons for the arts, heritage, and creative communities, and it has over 200 member organizations from around the city, and of course, lunch will be served. Secondly, on Thursday, March 8th, we'll recall this was the International Day of the Women whereby city council approved our ballot referendum. This measure, we should be reminded, was introduced by the women of city council where we collectively worked to make this happen. That includes Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, members, Councilwoman Maria Kiuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, and Councilwoman Howland Gim. Voters will have the opportunity to approve a city charter change to mandate sexual harassment prevention training on this coming May primary ballot. The yes or no question will read as follows. Shall the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter be amended to provide for mandatory annual training for all city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace? We're asking all listeners and viewers to remember this ballot question and to lend your voice. In conclusion, we all know that everyone deserves to work in an environment that works against gender stereotypes, empowers bystanders, encourages civility, and takes training seriously, all done to promote women, period. So, members of council, all of us firmly believe that no one should live in fear of being sexually harassed when they walk into our workplace, and so with this authorization by voters, mandatory sexual harassment training will become mandatory for all city employees. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick items and then a fun item. The Metro put on a front page about the Tenacious Tenants article, and it chronicles some of the things that Philadelphia is going through by way of the eviction crisis. My good friend and colleague, Ms. Gim, is on that panel to look at these issues in depth. I offered because of the Penn Wind situation, where two hundred units of housing were purchased by investors, some from in town, some from out of town, and they were summarily dismissed, evicted, many of whom did not receive their down payment and security deposit, and they were told, "We'll give that to you after you leave here thirty days later." I don't know about you, but average rent in Philadelphia is about eleven hundred dollars. First month, last month security brings you to about thirty-three hundred dollars. We looked into this, and we worked with the tenants union, and through the wisdom of some of my colleagues, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown said, "Meet with all parties. That's how this process should go." Talked to my other colleagues, and we have come up with what we believe is a good compromise for the good cause legislation. It protects tenants, but it doesn't trample property owners' rights, and we believe that we have the support in council to pass it. The imperfect should never be the enemy of the good. Nothing we do on this earth is ever going to be perfect for everybody, but the democratic process is to try to find common ground for the good of the people, and we believe that we've done that. Second thing I want to talk about today is flavored tobacco. My, Sunday is Mother's Day. I remember about my mother, she loved her Virginia Slims. She would send me and my brother to the corner store with just enough money, maybe a couple of pennies above, to get a Pepsi and a Virginia Slim. My father's preference was Pearl Malts, those red, yeah, those ruffles, red ruffles. And his favorite beverage was Dr. Pepper. We would do that, and we've done that until I was old enough to duck the duty. My father died of lung cancer. My mother, two snowstorms two seasons ago. My brother and I were getting her medicine, and we were driving it because I have four wheel drive to her block which had a steep incline. I was doing a radio interview at the time. I was multitasking, Mom, radio. My brother came back to the door, waved me in and told me, "Come up." My mother had an aneurysm, but there was a lit cigarette on the table next to her. So, as I fast forward, when my grand, excuse me, grandchild taking her to school, we stopped at a corner store to get her lunch. In the window, right next to the candy, our flavored tobacco. That you, I challenge anybody to tell me the difference between some of these packaging from Skittles and others. They are directed, designed to market at little kids to encourage them to begin that path. Now, some of us adults have purchased these products, but they should never be marketed towards kids. And so I'm going to say this to you, sometimes we are never going to get it a hundred percent right, but we will a hundred percent of the time try to do the right thing. I believe these two pieces of legislation are the right thing for the people of the city of Philadelphia. Finally, on a better note, the city council rowing team will be on the river eleven o'clock Saturday representing Philadelphia City Council to my colleague Gim, to my colleague Green, to Cindy Bass, who is, and Councilman Heenan. Particularly Councilwoman Bass, who had a fear of water. All I'm gonna say is the first thing she had on more gear than if she fell, she wasn't sinking anyway. She was ready, but as our coach took us out day after day, her confidence improved. She threw the life raft, the oxygen tank, all of that to the side and prayed. And she is ready, and I want, you know, Councilman Heenan, who is strong, but at times was rhythmically challenged. We could tell his improvement by how many times he would hit us in the back with the oar, but he has improved. And finally, our coach, Brandon Johnson, who has had patience with us, and I encourage all of us to come out, and the reason we're doing this is because young people don't view the school as their river and rowing as their sport. And we have found a way to provide a hundred spots for a free rowing camp this summer for urban kids. There are so many scholarships and opportunities that we just don't know about because we're afraid to come out of our comfort zone, like my colleague so bravely did. But by us offering ourselves in this race, we hope to encourage urban kids to come out of their comfort zone, take off their life jackets and oxygen tents, and go boldly into the school field and come out. Dry. And somebody asked me, and I am doing this, "Well, what do you do when the water gets on you in the river?" If the water gets on you, you're doing something wrong. You should be dry in that pool. So, we encourage you all to come out. Thank you for your support, and we may surprise some people on Saturday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. We look forward to your surprise. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we still have numbers coming in, we would like to give you a report on our parking amnesty program. Money's collected through yesterday, Wednesday, May ninth, are one million four hundred seventy-eight thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars, but that doesn't include the payment plan information. Value of payment plans is one million one hundred eighty thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars, which means the grand total of money that will be collected is two million six hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars. So, we in council are doing our part. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Council President. I just want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, for those very enthusiastic remarks, and I wish the city council rowing team the best this Saturday. Y'all have a lot of heart, and so I will be rooting for you guys. Going to serious, but I want to just make a few announcements. One, this evening in my district at twentieth, twenty-third and Snatter Avenue at Gasha Bankwell Hall, we'll be having our annual Mother's Day celebration from five to eight-thirty. It's the oldest but goodies Mother's Day celebration, and so we want to take a time out to just honor mothers for who they are and the great role that they play in our society. And I'd take a moment also to acknowledge all the mothers here in city council for holding it down. We all know that I'm a new dad, and so y'all walk me through that process. I will say that in terms of my city council family. Y'all have watched me grow in this process and becoming a dad and the transitioning of my mom and all of that. Y'all have been with me on that path, and so I have a greater appreciation for y'all rowing, so I want to acknowledge the hard work that you are doing. But I also want to take a moment and touch on two particular issues that I've been experiencing throughout my district. One, as I know we go through the process and making sure we get things right by crossing our Ts and dotting our Is when it comes to the issue of rebuild, I'm just looking forward to us to finding a way to wrap up this process, primarily because when I'm out and about, and I had a very, very contentious community meeting the other day, they put me on the spot about, one, my support for the recent sugar beverage tax and how that was going to really have an impact on our community when it comes to revitalizing our parks, our recreational facilities, community schools, as well as universal pre-K. I mentioned to them that we do have a court case that's taking place in Harrisburg, and hopefully that case will be fought, and I, we will win next week when the debate happens on the Supreme Court, but I want to continue us as a body advocating to move that process forward because my constituents are asking me, Councilman, what are we going to do about our parks and our recreational facilities? But it also ties into a bill that I'm a co-sponsor of that was introduced by my colleague, Councilman David O., a couple weeks ago. And I just want to read briefly from the press release that was put out, because this is a very, very serious issue that we're addressing here in the city of Philadelphia. On April the twenty-sixth of two thousand eighteen, my councilman, David O., introduced a bill to specifically respond to the drastic real estate property tax assessment for twenty nineteen. This bill was sponsored by Councilman Mark Squilla, myself, and Councilman Dom, and it will create a, it will change the charter and will require city council approval for the implementation of any real property assessments whose over-year percentage increase extends that of the National Urban Consumer Price Index. The legislation would add the following language to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter. Real property assessments are to be made on the basis of the actual value of individual real properties, which shall be determined using cost, comparable sales, and income approaches considered in conjunction with one another and independent of the need to balance the annual operating budget. And any annual percentage increase in overall real property assessments that exceeds the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers' percentage change for the same period shall require city council approval before it becomes effective. And I just want to say, at least in Point Breeze, we have seen property taxes increased by the tune of forty-three percent. I am consistently being bombarded in my office with letters, requests for meetings to address this issue, and quite frankly, because the assessments are already done, we, as a council body, don't have any say-so over that process, but my constituents are asking me to figure out a way to do something, and so I'm taking this bill serious. I want to continue advocating for this bill because I do believe we have to have some level of protection or some type of real answers to our constituents. We have people, I'm not talking about just long-term residents, I'm talking about the new folk that are moving the neighborhood. They're about to move and lose their homes because they can't pay their taxes in gentrifying neighborhoods, so it's affecting old residents, new residents, black residents, white residents, Asian residents, all in gentrifying neighborhoods. We welcome development, but we do not want to have displaced, we do not want to have development in a place, as it relates to displacing long-term and new-term residents. And so I'm going to continue working with my colleagues on this particular bill, but we have to have some type of check and balance because we don't want to have a backdoor tax increase on our residents as it relates to property value going up in their neighborhoods. And to give you an example, somebody tagged me on Facebook and gave me a picture of two houses on the same block right next to each other with two totally different property assessments. Like, how do you justify those numbers? And so I'm going to stay on this case because we got to figure it out, and I'm telling you, you know, if we don't take this seriously, you know, I can't speak for all of you, but some of you might not even be coming back next year. I'm going to be quite frank because people are upset. So, I'm going to do my job to make sure I'm on the ground, let my constituents know that I'm fighting back on this particular issue. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the big rowing races on Saturday, but I do want to announce too that they, they'll be officially renaming parts of South Broad Street by Reed for Jimmy Taiyun Way, Councilman in the first district at ten AM on Saturday morning, so all are invited if they want to stop by before they go row or watch the team. Everybody's welcome, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Jones, for that rowing team opportunity and our great coach, Brandon from BLJ Rowing. He's really doing a lot to diversify the school and make sure that many people have a chance to enjoy the river, so I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully we will make it across the finish line and not end up in a bank somewhere or worse in the water. I also, you know, just want to really thank my colleagues as well for the lively conversation we've been having in city council the last couple of days around school funding. Today, the inquiry ran at second of three, I believe, pieces on the state of our public schools, in particular, the physical conditions that they're in. Many of you on, many of my colleagues already, including and especially Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, have been incredibly active on paying attention to lead poisoning and not take it for granted. We were able together to pass a requirement that water fountains and stations in schools had to abide by a lead content of no higher than fifteen parts per billion. We've been paying attention to lead paint and lead poisoning, but the story on Sunday made it very clear that we have a long way to go. The cafeteria, for example, at Philadelphia High School for Girls has a water content, if we regulate it at fifteen, the water content in the cafeteria contains lead parts of six hundred parts per billion. If you're swimming in Sarah High School's pool, you're exposed to almost fifty-two-hundred parts per billion lead concentration in the water. If you think that the EPA recommends that there's only forty micrograms of lead per paint per square foot at an all knee high school classroom, it's almost ten thousand on the second floor. There are stairwells and autistic support rooms that are in the thousands. So, the issue that we've got is how not to create a sense of helplessness or a lack of ability to take on issues like asbestos in our schools or lead poisoning amongst our children, but to recognize that we still have a lot of work to do. We have a history that we have inherited, but we've already shown that as a body together, we put brand-new water hydration stations in every single public school in the city to guarantee that those children wouldn't drink or be forced to only drink from those water fountains. We're figuring out options for ourselves about what school funding is going to mean in the future. You know, we heard testimony from the school district this week that we've got hundreds of vacancies in our school facilities, which is partly why the buildings are as dirty and as uncared for as they are. We're paying nine dollars an hour for cleaners, which is simply not workable, and it's one of the main reasons why they have vacancies. We've got a lot of conversations to have about how we're going to fund our schools. There's not only one option. There are multiple options that we have on the table, but I think the urgency is there, the need is there, and the responsibility is ours to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the school district agreed yesterday to give within two days, everybody, a list of, that was my school, Sarah. In fact, my sister taught there, to give us a list of what their plans are for making corrections specifically on these schools in our district that so many of us have. So, thank you, Councilman Gim, for bringing that forward, and I'd like to thank my colleagues rowing, John Fenton, my office is doing, and I'm certainly sorry I can't be there and I can't be with this naming of a part of Broad Street for Taiyun because Janie from Chaney has to be at Chaney. We got, this is our anniversary, and we've got to be there to march these new folks in, so unfortunately, it's one of those real busy days, so I'm sorry I can't be with you, but Janie from Chaney will be there with those who are coming after us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief, but I want to address Councilman Johnson's comments for a moment about taxes, and we've been through this budgets hearing this season, and I have heard several things from the budget process that I wanted to make sure my colleagues wanted to share with them, and that is that there are alternatives to raising taxes. There are alternatives. We heard yesterday the school system will need the money in three years basically from now, not in the next two years, and I'm in favor of supporting the school district and what they need. I'm not in favor of raising taxes in order to do that. I'm in favor of cutting the prisons. We saw population now is down thirty- is down thirty-five percent, and don't tell me we can't cut fifteen percent of a three-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollar budget that includes fringe benefits. That's a lot of money. Number two, there's still delinquent taxes on the table of two-hundred-and-fifteen million of non-owner occupied, and we will protect low-income homeowners who are renters through sequestration. That's two-hundred-and-fifteen million. There are other alternatives, and number three, we heard yesterday that the administration will have our accounts reconciled by the end of June, and hopefully we will be able to balance the remainder of the twenty-seven million that's missing. And I've said this publicly, I'll say it again, I am not voting for any tax increase, none, until we see all of our accounts reconciled and the money's found. That will be my position. Thank you, and happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Okay, with that, that concludes our speeches. That concludes our speeches, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, yes, yes. Not quite, Mr. President, only because as a former cheerleader from Penn State, I need to salute those that are rowing this weekend, like, when, and can't be, can't join them, and couldn't participate in that physical fitness experience, because I too will be away this weekend celebrating my daughter's graduation after forty-eight months from Syracuse University with honors. I want to salute, I want to salute all mothers, those that are here and those that are angels, and yes, to Councilman Johnson's commentary, we are working mothers who walk on a tightrope backwards, with high heels on, blindfolded, on a daily basis, and we handle all of our duties with style and grace. With that, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May eighteenth, at two thousand and eighteen, at ten a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.